Good evening. This is Brian Waller, Zoning Board of Appeals Chairman. As a preliminary matter, we'll start by confirming that all remote members, or there are
There are no remote members.
Good evening. It is 7:03 PM. This open meeting of the Grafton Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted both remotely and in person, consistent with Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022, which extends remote meeting protocols through March 31, 2025. This meeting is convened via Zoom video conference and in-person, as posted on the meeting agenda, which can be found on the Town of Grafton website. Please see the meeting agenda for details on how to participate remotely. Please note that the meeting is being recorded. All participation within the meeting will be visible to others. Accordingly, please be aware that other people may be able to see you, and you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured in the recording, and the recording may be published or rebroadcast at a later date. This meeting may feature public comment. Anyone that is attending virtually and you'd like acknowledgement to speak, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. The meeting administrator will enable you to speak when it's your turn. Anyone on the phone, the AV staff will coordinate. Anyone in person, we ask you to step up to the podium to speak. And all speakers, please state your name and address prior to your comments or questions. And each vote taken this evening will be done by a roll call vote. So the first item on our agenda was 9 Logan Path, which, excuse me, has requested a continuance.
We can move that to the end, and then, because we've got a new case, so we'll have to pick a date for a hearing. So you can move it to the end.
All right. So before we start with case 907, just want to acknowledge our former member, Bill Yeomans, who has resigned from the board, and just thank him for his years of service on the board and all his contributions. Very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Bill. You've contributed immensely to the board. Thank you.
It's been my pleasure.
I'll miss you.
But I'm sure we'll keep hearing from you.
I hope we keep hearing from you.
They won't be quiet.
That's fine.
On or off the board.
All right. So our first case is number 907, 42 Airport.
Both of you want to come sit up at the desk right here?
Do you want me to sit over here?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can both sit.
Either, yeah, both of you can sit.
All right, all right. You don't have to.
You don't have to. You can stand wherever's more comfortable for either of you.
Whatever works.
So I'm just going to read the rules of order. So the clerk will read the petition, and then the petitioner will have the opportunity to present their case. The petitioner will have 15 minutes to present. The petitioner shall present all the required information, and all comments should be specific. Any opposition would have 15 minutes to speak. I don't see any opposition. These time limits may be extended only with consent of the board. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or in opposition to the petition will have the opportunity to do so. Any letters received in favor of or in opposition to petition will be posted under the case on the Grafton ZBA website. If you wish to speak, state your name and address for the record. The board may ask questions from time to time. However, all conversations should be directed through the chair. After all evidence is presented, the board will enter into discussion and render a decision. At any time during this hearing and prior to a decision being made by the board, the petitioner has the option to request that the petition be withdrawn without prejudice or continue to a later date, at which time the petitioner could provide additional information that's favorable to their application. So with that, I would ask Ms. Reed to read the petition.
The Grafton Board of Appeals has received a petition from Darryl Bellotti for 42 Airport Road requesting that the Zoning Board of Appeals grant a special permit to construct a six-foot-by-14-foot porch to replace an existing non-conforming deck. The proposed porch will be no closer to the road than the current porch in accordance with Section 3.4.3.5 of the Grafton Bylaws. The board will conduct a public hearing on August 22, 2024, at 7:00 PM in Conference Room A at the Mississauga Centre in Grafton to consider this request and/or take whatever action is necessary, including the granting of a finding, special permit, variance, or other necessary relief allowed under the zoning bylaw. Zoning Board of Appeals Brian Waller, William McCusker, Kay Reed, William Yeomans, are we still saying William Yeomans?
Well, he was on board at that time.
Okay, all right. Peter Adams, Jiffy Thomas, and Alex Mahia.
So, okay, so there's a 42 Airport Road. I don't know what you guys have for pictures up there or whatever, but...
Name and address.
42, oh, my name is Darryl Bellotti. My address isn't 42 Airport Road, but she is my sister Cindy Bellotti.
My address is 42.
Right, 42 Airport Road, North Grafton, Mass., 01536.
So we can see these pictures that you can see them.
So there's an existing six-by-six front, it's just a little front porch there, and it's 21 feet from the road. That's what makes it non-conforming, or part of what makes it non-conforming. The actual house is closer than the 30-foot rule, so it's already, you know, it was that way when it was bought or built or whatever. It's been that way forever. So all's we're proposing is to make it 14-foot wide instead of six-foot wide and not coming any closer to the road. And that's all we're asking for right there. And it just, it's going to add some more space for people to get in and out of the house safely, and, you know, it just makes it a better place. You can sit there and, you know, watch the neighborhood go by, and all the neighbors knew, nobody's here to complain. So I was just hoping that it would squeak through, and when I had the drawing done, I had John Morrow do the design, and he didn't know about the bylaw that, because we brought it right up to the existing, you know, distance from the road, and we figured we'd be okay to just stretch it out to 14 feet wide, but, and then they caught it in, you know, for the bylaw that we couldn't enlarge that structure. That was non-conforming. So I was just, we were just hoping that we could.
Is there any questions or comments from the board?
Question, what the plan we have by Norman Hill, is that the proposed, or is that what's existing?
I don't know what plan you have.
It's the same thing as that, I think.
Right here. So is this little gray area what's existing, and then you want to add on to this white area back here?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. No, the shaded area is what we'll add on. The white area is the existing. So the shaded area is proposed.
Okay, and this is what's existing.
Yes.
Okay. The white area and the set of stairs on it, the stairs will go, the white will stay, and the gray will be added.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Usually they put it in there. I don't know why he didn't.
You know, I ended up having to get about six or seven plot plans getting through this whole thing. So I don't know which one who ended up with, why, you know, mine doesn't show it. On one of them, it did show it proposed.
Yeah, no, this is the same one that's there, but it just doesn't show proposed and existing.
Right. It's probably in the, yeah, I don't know.
Oh, he does say P porch, so proposed porch. If you look right here, you can see right here, it says proposed porch. So that's...
P porch?
And then it says E deck, which is what's...
Existing deck, yeah.
Yep, not the one on the side of the house, though. We're looking at the little one in the front.
Right. Because the one on the side, you're fine.
Right.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McCusker.
So just for the benefit of the findings that we need to establish here, how many bedrooms, how many baths are in the house? I know it seems irrelevant.
Three bedrooms, two bathrooms?
Three bed, two bath, and that's not changing, right?
No.
All right, thank you.
Where's the front door, by the existing part of the deck?
Right.
Okay. I figured it must be.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we just wanted to pull it, you know, eight feet wider, and then that's it. I don't think it...
Just another question. So it's not just the porch or the deck that's non-conforming, even the dwelling itself is a little short, right?
And, you know, we didn't move that, so it's always been that way.
Yeah, you just picked it up and moved.
They probably had a 20-foot setback back then or something, because there used to be a seven-foot sideline till 86, so...
Sure, yeah.
I imagine the frontage distance was a lot shorter than that.
I would guess that just about every house up there is non-conforming now, so...
Right. We've had a bunch of them.
Yeah, they're very close, you know.
We actually just had one Bedford.
Oh, really? Is that what it was?
Yeah, yeah, we just had one Bedford.
Maybe we have something else on Airport Road, too.
Yeah, we've had a couple of them.
I looked for that, and I couldn't find it. It was within the last two years.
Yeah, one Bedford was a month ago.
Yeah, and I guess all this...
There was another one.
Yeah, there's another one.
Oh, there's been a few of them.
Yeah, on Airport, yeah, Airport and Bedford, all up in there.
And it's survey mistakes everywhere up there, too, from what I hear.
I wasn't aware that there was a, this corner lot setback requirement, but irrelevant here, but...
Well, no, it kind of is. Well...
Well, they meet the side setback, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's just that, you know, in the past, before it was clarified, people would maybe try and say, hey, this is my front yard, this is my side yard.
Oh, I see.
And then they're in compliance if that's the way it was.
Gotcha.
But Grafton has double jeopardy on corners.
Kind of get penalized for owning a corner lot.
That's what you call, yeah.
I didn't make the rules, so I can say that.
Yeah, yeah. You know, it's no fun if the sewer goes by. I've heard that.
No, they can't get you on both sides, can they?
That's what they do. So I've heard, so I've heard.
I didn't know, until you told me.
Yeah, you pay for both sides.
Wow.
Isn't that funny?
Everybody wanted a corner lot, you know, years ago. Everybody wanted a corner lot.
Oh, yeah, that was the spot.
Till the sewer came. Sewer's good, but...
Do we know if it's in the water spot?
It is not.
Okay.
It is not. I double-checked that this afternoon.
If that's in the Water Protection Overlay District, we got big problems.
I hear you, but it just seems like we've had crazier places that are in the district, so I've just learned to ask every single time.
No, I don't check that this afternoon.
Are there any further comments or questions from the board? Anything else from the applicant? Anything else you want to add?
No, I'd say that's all. It's very simple. I guess the plus for the town would be it would add the value to the town, raise the taxes, and everybody's happy. You know, oh, it's going to add something, it's going to add something. But it says...
The town doesn't need your new deck to raise taxes.
That's true.
Well, they'll be able to get more. But it says if it didn't significantly take away from the intent of the bylaw, that it should be okay, you know? So that's why I figured, I've been a builder here in town for pretty much my whole life, but I usually tell people, if you need a variance here, just skip it, you know, change your plan. But this seemed like we had a shot, so I figured, let's give it a try. It's my sister's house, you know, we're going to try it. So that's it.
All right. So I entertain a motion to close the public hearing on...
Did you check for anyone online or anything like that?
There's no one online.
I move a closed case 907.
Second. Motion made in second. We'll do a roll call vote, and actually, I'll appoint Mr. Thomas.
You do.
You're in my line of sight.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Mr. Thomas is a voting member. Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McCusker.
So for findings, what I have here is F1, the structure's built in 1955. F2, parcels in the R20 zoning district. F3, the R20 zoning zone requires 20,000 square foot lot. F4, lot is 13,883 square feet. F5, what I'd like to do is copy in item number four from the zoning determination, which talks about the corner lock requirement. I think it would be good just to have that in the findings, so it's clear that we understood that situation. So then F6 becomes the R20 zone requires 30-foot front yard setback, and the structure's located 21.4 feet off the front yard setback on the airport roadside. And then based on findings 1 through 6, the current structure is a pre-existing non-conforming structure. F7, the current use is residential home. F8, the current home is three-bedroom, two-bath. Proposed home is three-bedroom, two-bath. The neighborhood consists, F9, the neighborhood consists primarily of residences. F10, the current deck and proposed deck are both 21.4 feet off the front lot line. Based on findings, F7 through F10, the proposed addition is not more detrimental to the neighborhood. And then the finding 11 is that this lot is not in the Water Supply Protection Overlay District. End of findings.
Does it matter if it's called a deck or a porch?
I don't know if it matters. You want me to change the deck to porch?
No, I don't care. I don't know.
I thought a porch had a roof.
That's what I thought. That's why I wasn't sure if it was porch or deck, so I did porch slash deck.
I can do porch slash deck.
There we go. Then we got it.
Porch slash deck. Porch slash deck. Okay. So there's our findings. So ma'am, you own the property, right?
Yes.
So the special permit is to Cynthia Bellotti?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hang on a second. Six-by-14 front porch to replace front porch. Are we good with that drawing that was on the, that we were showing on the screen?
Yeah, that was exactly what it was.
So what I'm going to do is, all right, so the motion's going to be, the Board of Appeal, I move the Board of Appeals grants a special permit to Cynthia Bellotti for 42 Airport Road to allow, to construct a six-by-14 front porch as depicted in Exhibit A.
Beautiful.
You going to put special permit in there, or?
Yeah. Granted, granted, Board of Appeals, grant a special permit, yeah, you're right. Grant a special permit to Cynthia Bellotti for 42 Airport Road, so that gives away from there, to allow, there's the allow, I knew it was, to allow a six-by-14 front porch as depicted in Exhibit A.
Second.
Simple, sweet. All this other stuff goes away.
All right. Motion made in second. We'll take a roll call vote.
Who's second, Peter? Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Who made the motion? Did I make the motion?
You made the motion.
You did, yeah.
Okay, yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. The special permit is granted, and Katrina will explain what...
So I need you to sign this. This becomes part of the decision.
So you've got the Exhibit A there?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So sign it.
Okay.
Just take the pen. Cynthia needs to sign both of those.
Okay.
It becomes part of the decision. I have 14 days to get the decision written inside by the board, then it gets filed with the clerk, then just sign it right there.
Anywhere, yep.
Anywhere on it. Then there's a 21-day appeal period. On that 21st day, you come pick up the non, the certified notice of no appeal, take it to the Worcester Registry of Deeds, have it filed, and bring me back a copy. At that point, we should be able to, as long as all the building stuff is in, and we get it, we should be able to click, you give me that, we can push the button on the building permit.
Okay, does that have to go to the Registry of Deeds on the 21st first day, or just after the 21st?
After the 21st. I'll send you a letter that outlines all this with a copy of the decision.
All right, perfect.
Okay.
Perfect, yep. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Let's wrap up your meeting quick tonight.
We got a few more to go.
Almost went over.
Were you working on the side deck the other day?
Yes, yeah. That one, we changed that one to, so we didn't have to come to the meeting. And then we ended up splitting into two permits because she wanted the bigger deck in the front, so, but yeah, the first deck is almost finished. It's very nice. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good night.
Have a good night.
You, too. Thank you.
So I see Sotier online, so I guess the next item will address is Prentice Place.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Bill Yeomans. I'm a former member of the ZBA, and I was asked to come tonight because Prentice Place is something that I've been, in my former serving duties on the ZBA, I've interacted with Sotier regarding Prentice Place and the plantings for Prentice Place. So I'm here as a private citizen to answer any questions you may have or Sotier may have relative to our discussions on the planting plan for Prentice Place.
All right. I was going to say, maybe Bill could just give us a rundown on this. You started this, right?
Yeah.
So you went out there, you observed some things?
Yeah.
So, yeah, can you just...
Going back to June, Sotier and I met. I raised the question on some plantings that I didn't see, which were Don redwoods, and Sotier was diligently trying to find those, which he did. And the plan that was developed, that we approved as a board previously, when the whole project was approved, had three of those Don redwoods, which are very big trees. We had a discussion as a board, and based on my recommendation and the discussion with the landscape architect, we decided to cut that back down to one, because the size of the tree and where it was going, I mean, that particular tree turns into a 75-foot-high tree and 20 to 25 feet wide. Sotier diligently found those, and then after reviewing it with Graves Engineering and Jeff Walsh, we found that where those trees were going to be planted was a spillway for a detention basin. And, you know, Jeff said you should not put trees in a spillway of a detention basin. So I communicated that back to Sotier, and one of the questions that exists is the back of the parking lot in front of the fence that we required as a buffer between the project and the people over on Matthew Circle, it was going to give them some screening. That area, and there's, it's basically the sidewalk, I don't know if you have that planned, but it's basically, you know, the parking lot, if I may use this as an example, the parking lot is here, Matthew Circle is over there, there's a fence here, and there's a boat, maybe eight feet between the parking lot and the fence area. Sotier has, you know, there's a curbing there, and there's grass there, but the other six to eight feet is totally infested with Japanese bloodroot, and it's, you know, you see it everywhere. And Sotier had raised the concern at that point that there was a line that he said he could not invade or, you know, do any disturbance on it, and thinking that that was a conservation restriction, and it was not. That line was a construction do-not-disturb line that was just while he was building it and doing that sidewalk work, you couldn't go beyond that line. So now we have the area, the parking lot is here, the grass area is here, and Sotier has, you know, it's very easy to work with. He's done just about everything that is required on the plan, but the part that is in the back along the fence, Matthew Circle is over where you're sitting, that area has some grass in it, and I had suggested to Sotier in a letter that perhaps that could be dug out and re-loaned, and then you could put trees along there. What was originally designed for that area was a, it must have been over a dozen eastern white pines of a type that go very much into a cone shape, and that is not practical in that particular area right now. So the question is, in my mind, to give Sotier the opportunity with his landscape architect to come up with an alternative, and it doesn't have to be done this year, the board could allow it to be done in the spring, but to look at an alternative to give the people on Matthew Circle what we originally prescribed with that fence, and there were going to be some big pines, and you can see the picture in the, that Katrina has brought up on the screen. So, you know, that's where it's at, and Sotier has been very accommodating to work with, and, you know, we've had visits, I had visits with Sotier, and then Sotier went on vacation, which he was entitled to, and now he's back. So it's a question of what do you want Sotier to do? And I'm just describing what I had suggested was that whole area in the back, and if you look at on the map, the far right is the dumpster, and then it's the fence, and then it goes to the left, and it goes behind building number three. The rest of it, I think, has been accommodated as far as the planting is concerned. So the question there is...
And where is the Japanese knotweed?
It's all along that area that we, where you see, yeah, it's that whole area. And he has indicated, and I've seen it, that Japanese knotweed is also in the lawn, but the people that are maintaining the property are taking care of that with some of the weed killer. But this area is dense and it's thick, and something has to be planted along there. It's a question of what is the best plant to get, and the particular pine that, and I think it was probably 15 pines that were going to go across there, and the key thing, I think, is that our original intent was to give the people on Matthew Circle some privacy with the fence, and eventually, some privacy in the fall and winter, when there are no leaves on the trees, to give them potentially, you know, in, anything you plant, the first year it sleeps, the second year it creeps, and the third year it leaps. it leaps. So those trees within three to 10 years would be providing some screen to the people on Matthew Circle. And any other questions you have or Sotir has, I'll be happy to stay for the rest of the meeting.
So, so if, if they were to plant the pines now, where the prince said they should plant them, that would be means they're planting them in the middle of the knotweed, right?
Yeah.
Is that, is that?
Absolutely.
And that's not, not good?
No.
I'm just curious as to why not?
Because the knotweed is so dense, and it takes over, and has taken over that whole back of that area, that, first of all, the trees that they, they had planned for that area were not readily available.
Okay.
So now we have, you know, trees that are not available, and you, you know, you're almost destined...
If you were to plant one of the trees there today in the middle of the knotweed, it wouldn't survive? Is that, is that the issue?
Excuse me. I'm gonna, I'm gonna take these off and...
Yeah, so, so my, so the question is, if you were to plant a tree today in the middle of knotweed, are you saying it won't survive?
Oh, it, it may survive, but it, it, it's unlikely it will survive because the competition for roots, you've got a dense, you know, if, and, and you can't, you can't pull out the knotweed.
Right. No, I understand that. I understand that.
So...
All right, no, no, that's, okay. So maybe...
I'm sorry. So, so Tiers willing to dig out the knotweed and put the new?
No.
No?
No.
No? What's gonna happen with the knotweed?
There's a, that memo with Catherine basically says that...
My, my suggestion, in a letter, which I think I copied the, the board on.
Probably. I just didn't...
My suggestion would be, an alternative would be to dig out the knotweed, and, and to dig it out, because there's no restriction in that area. Recall that I mentioned that line that was going across there that he thought was a do-not-disturb line? That was a construction do-not-disturb area. So he could dig out the knotweed with a, you know, with a small front-end loader, and take out that whole area of loam and dirt and knotweed, and then re-loom it with dirt, and it doesn't have, it has to be plantable soil, and then put the trees in that they, they can determine what's the best tree. I had suggested in my letter to Sotir and to the board, a, a couple of alternatives that his landscape architect could look at.
So what's the bottom line that he's prepared to do?
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm...
What's the bottom line that Sotir would agree?
Maybe we need to hear from Sotir.
Yeah, like, right, okay, yeah.
Good evening, everyone. I have heard everything that Bill has said, and he is 100% on the mark as to what our conversations and discussions were about that particular area of the site. I have a little bit of a dilemma that I need to overcome. When the plan was approved, it was explicitly made clear that there was going to be a no disturbance zone within so many feet from the property line, other than having to put the fence. And for me to go out and disturb that area because we want to plant the trees, I don't think that is a fair request. I think what I would suggest we do, I'd like to have the board go visit the site and see what the existing conditions are today, then visit the site when it's wintertime, where all the plants are, no leaves, and they're dead, and see what the place looks like before we decide what we want to do out there. I don't want to say no, that I'm not interested in planting trees. I just don't want to do something that's going to be unproductive. And having to make it productive, the cost of having to remove the knotweed is just exorbitant, and it's not something that you can control. So I don't believe it is a fair request when in fact the intent was to create a buffer between the abudders who are, the two abudders that are next to the fence itself. Because if you go out and take a look at it now, you can't see the buildings from either side. If you're on the properties that are next to that fence or on my property, you will not see any of the buildings or the parking lot or anything like that, because it's so thickly developed with the existing trees that we preserved, as well as the knotweed that's there. So my suggestion would be is before we make any decisions to what needs to be done, let's evaluate and see what we're dealing with and what it looks like now versus the wintertime, and then we can get together again and talk what options we have to work with. That would be my recommendation. But it's your decision to what you need to see take place, and I don't want to say no to Bill, because Bill has been terrific. The project looks awesome, thanks to him and the rest of the board who approved the project. So I don't have any inclination to avoid doing something, but just remember that it was explicitly put as a condition, a no disturbance zone. Doesn't matter what the conditions are, whether it's for Conservation Commission or for any construction, it's a no disturbance, you don't disturb the area, period. And I've abided by those, by those terms.
So I personally don't think that's unreasonable to evaluate what it looks like with, you know, in the winter with no leaves, unless, you know, there's photos or something that, you know, show that, you know, from last winter or something. But I don't want to have something done just for the sake of doing it, if there's gonna be no benefit to it.
And, Mr. Thomas?
Just a question. So the reason you're encouraging us to look at it in the winter is because things die and dry out? And is, is your viewpoint that because of that, planting the trees is okay to do in the middle of the weeds? Or, in, in other words, what are we gonna?
And correct me if I'm wrong, Sotir, but my understanding is that there's, the intention of these trees was to create a buffer for the, the street, the putting street.
Yeah.
What Sotir is saying is that there's already, there's a buffer there, so there's no further buffer needed with additional trees. But you really need to see it in the winter to determine that, because we were, we had talked about, and Bill's proposal was pine trees or whatever those trees are called, those types of trees. Caniferous?
Mr. Chairman, one more thing, and this is information that was presented to me by the landscape architect. When the plan was prepared, it was wintertime. Nobody knew, nobody saw anything related to the type of Japanese knotwood, netwood at that location. So when the architect put the plan together, she was not aware that there were the invasive plants at that location. Had, she had known, she would probably have not made any recommendations. So I find myself, you know, an error has been made at the time the plan was developed. And I'm trying to make good on something there, but I don't really want to, like you said, do something just for the sake of doing it. I'd like to have it be thought out and do something that's going to have a benefit to the abudders and, and to me as well, you know. I mean, I already committed to buying the trees, so that part of it is not an issue, buying and planting them, but they have to go and do beyond that, and then finding out that the roots are not gonna, you know, take. That's, that's why we're discussing this right now. That's why I was suggesting, you know, taking pictures now and then going back in the wintertime, see what it looks like, and we can rehash this thing again sometime in January or February and decide what best works for all of us.
Yeah, and just from my perspective, your willingness to, to follow through and, and do that, you know, at this point, I don't think it's unreasonable to give it a little more time and see if, so we can get that. But it, just one thing you said, I, I don't think there was an error made in the plan at all. I think just the conditions have changed since then.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Kusker.
So a, a couple things. First of all, let's be real clear. I, I do not want Sotir to, to, to spend money planting trees that are not gonna survive, right? I don't want that at all. But I'm, I'm just trying to understand, if I, on the screen right now is the landscape plan, and I think the, I, I think that is showing new trees being planted in that limit of disturbance. I mean, I guess, I'm not sure what it is that's between the blue line and the fence, which is the, the straight line. All of the, are those existing trees or are those supposed to be new trees? And maybe, Bill, you know.
They're, they're new.
They're, they're new.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you, if you look at the legend, the Xs were supposed to be trees that were going to be removed.
Yeah.
And then the kind of funky that looks like a daisy with a dot is proposed evergreen that was supposed to be planted.
Can you zoom in on that?
Ah, absolutely. What do you want to see? You want to see the legend or the trees?
No, just the left side over there.
And this is in a no disturbance zone.
Right. So, so, so my, my point is, the plan had trees going in the no disturbance zone. So I, I just want to really, I want to set the record straight here. I don't know how we're gonna plant trees in the no disturbance zone if we really felt it was a no disturbance zone. And so I, I agree with what Bill was saying, you know, the intention was that, you know, you're not doing construction and things of that there, but the plan and the intent was for trees to be there. And then the other exception I gotta take is, we all walked that land before anything was cleared, and we knew the Japanese knotweed was there. It was there then. I mean, so, you know, it, it's not a surprise. We knew it was there. Now, that being, and, and quite frankly, I don't know this well enough, and that's why you kind of rely on the landscape architect. I assume she knew that as well, and that what she had proposed to plant where there was currently knotweed would survive, or whatever. I, I don't know. But, you know, but here we are. And I don't want you to plant something that's not gonna survive. I get it. And I'm not advocating, I just want to set the record straight. I agree. If, if, it probably makes sense to revisit this in the winter, let's see what things look like, and come up with some sort of a plan at that point in time. I, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Mr. Reed?
So in her letter from Kate, she's stating that when they visited the site in March 2021, Japanese knotwood was not observed. So my question is, now that it has grown up, is it on both sides of the fence? Is it everywhere? So it's not like it grew up on one side and we could plant trees possibly on the other? It's, it's spread under, over the fence, whatever. Okay.
It's not neighborly friendly.
Okay. Well, I didn't know if maybe, there was some way, okay.
I mean, if you look, it's here, and there's, the fence is probably here, and it's gonna be back in here.
And is it, is it tall enough that it's blocking the view from Matthew Circle? I mean, how high is it? Can't be.
No.
No.
No. It doesn't get that high.
So what's gonna stop their, from, what's gonna buffer their view? I mean, there, it looks like they're not gonna have any sort of buffer.
Mr. Yormans?
May, make a comment. Thank you. I think back to our original intent for asking for the screening, the planting there to accommodate the abudders on Matthew Circle. And while from ground level, when you look into that knotweed, you cannot see the fence.
Right.
However, that all dies back and falls down during the winter, and the people that are on Matthew Circle in two-story houses and three-story houses, my thought when I was on the board was, we sought to approve a landscape plan, and if you recall, I was quite vocal on the landscape plan because I wanted certain things, you know, the Don redwood. As it turned out, that was not a good place for it. And per the advice of our town engineer, you don't plant in a spillway. So we devised that plan and approved that plan to accommodate the abudders who were impacted from this 40B project. And this area, in my opinion, should still be planted. I have suggested how it could be successfully planted, and that is to dig out and fill it with dirt and put in some new trees. And you can decide this in the spring. I don't think it's something that has to be handled in, in the fall. But again, I ask the board, as I make my final comment relative to this project, that we requested the plantings on the back to go above the fence, because in 10 years' time, they'll be 30 feet tall if you plant the right tree. And that 30 foot will also shade Sotir's tenants from the view from looking into those other houses.
So, so on, are we, do we know that the residents on Matthew Circle have any concerns now with this view? And I, I know there were discussions early on, but now that things are built, are they?
Yeah, I don't know. When you drive by, it looks like they would be concerned, but I don't know. It looks pretty close.
I, I think that if I, if I was one of those residents and they were here frequently, and, and, you know, there, I think their expectation is that there's gonna be these plantings that are gonna grow and create a buffer, because that's what we talked about.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, so if I was one of those folks, I would just be waiting for this plant, these plantings to happen. And, you know, I might at some point say, hey, what's going on?
So, but I, I guess my, what I'm saying is, if, you know, with the, now that things are built, is it not, and I don't know, I haven't done this, but is it not as easy to see through, you know, the existing trees as, you know, we thought?
Well, today, today it's great, but I think that the issue is gonna be in the wintertime, once, once the, once the leaves are off the trees.
They need pine trees.
I mean, you can look right here, if I do the near map.
And, if I may, the trees that were suggested by Sotir's landscape architect were eastern white pines, which get very large, and they were a particular variety that is a cone shape, not your typical white pines that you see. And the number of them, I think there were 15 that were to be planted along that.
Not great.
And I think that, as I best recall, we had a lot of vocalizing from Matthew Circle relative to this project. And Bill, you and I have walked through that project a few times, and I think, you know, it's there, and it's got to be dealt with. And the, and I'll leave with this thought, and I promise I'm not gonna say another word, is that we've, we've dealt before with decisions that were not well-made previous to this board and previous planning boards. The town has dealt with many issues with sizable expenditures to accommodate something that was approved earlier. We listened to them, we designed and requested a fence with some plantings to accommodate Matthew Circle residents who were most impacted by this. And I, I've pointed this out as best I can, and now it's up to your board to decide what you want to do with it.
So when was that picture taken?
April of this year.
So there are some trees right by the fence already, right?
But that's what it looks like with no leaves on it.
Those, those are the existing trees.
Those are the existing trees. So that's what it looked like.
Those are the existing trees. So that's what it looked like then. And then if I go.
Wait, wait, before you move that picture.
Yeah.
It's right by the white fence. That's where we're looking.
Yeah, right here.
We go into that development, straight in.
Yeah.
Yep.
Not to the right.
Nope, straight here.
Just straight in along the in between the parking lot and the white fence.
Correct.
Not on the other side of the white fence.
Correct. So if I.
Wait, what do you mean not on the other side of the white fence?
I don't know.
That's that's their, that's the Matthew Circle land.
Oh, okay. That's what I'm, the white fences.
That's on the property line, basically.
That's on this property.
A foot off the property line.
Sorry, you said no more.
I don't.
I've been crushed.
I just have a follow on it wasn't done. So for the plan, were those trees supposed to be taken down?
So that's what it looks like.
No.
No, no.
No, we walked, Bill and I and a few others walked it and said, save, save, go.
Keep those trees.
Absolutely.
And these eastern pines were in addition to those trees, right?
Yes.
Yep.
So that was a decision that was made then. And it sounds like Sotir is not opposed to planting it. What he's now opposed to is the expense in digging out the weeds that supposedly was not known at that point in time, right? So if you go back to the residents, we're just changing the entire proposal from that those days, right? Because of a hardship. And the hardship is the financial cost burden to pull up the weeds. Is that what this comes down to? Because I'm hearing he's ready to plant it, and that's not the problem.
Well.
But they won't be healthy in that spot because of the knotweed. So that's.
What Bill says, remove it.
Yeah, right.
And in my position is, you know, I I I yet that perhaps the landscape architect didn't realize there was knotweed there.
Yeah.
But a lot of other people knew. I mean, because it was there before anyone touched anything, right? When Bill and I walked it, it was all over the place. And we even we even pointed it out and discussed the fact that that's got to get removed. So, you know, it was known and then, you know, we have an approved landscape plan. And again, we, you know, we asked Sotir to spend money on this, get it done before. And because it was so important, and we have a plan that has new trees planted in amongst the existing trees in that area of disturbance. That was where they're supposed to be. And, you know, and at this point, you know, you know, I think the developer has a problem because of the knotweed. And I think that's that's what we're trying to figure out what to do. And, you know, like I said, I'm okay looking to see what this thing looks like in the winter time, but I think I know what it's going to look like. But that's fine. And we're not going to close the project or release the bond until this is resolved. So if if the developer is not in a rush to get it resolved and wants, is okay letting it go till spring or whatever, that's fine. I'm fine with that. We'll look at it in the winter and make a decision.
I do want to say something for the record, if I may, please. With all due respect, Bill, I don't believe anybody knew that the knotweed was there during the design of the project or after, because somebody would have said something to the landscape architect or to the consultant that the ZBA had to review the landscape architectural plans. So I want to set the record straight that we did not know that there was knotweed there when the design was put together. And neither did anybody else say anything, whether it was the board, the board's architect, landscape architect, or my architect. But, you know, I just want to go on record that I don't want to be accused of something deliberately knowing and trying to avoid that because that's not me.
Yeah, no, Sotir, that's that's not, that's I wasn't saying it that quite that way. And I don't know whether you knew, and I already acknowledge that perhaps the landscape architect didn't know. I can tell you, though, the 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 land, the guy who was cutting down the trees, your site guy who was there right at the very beginning before, like the first guy in there started clearing that land, he knew. And I don't remember who else was walking the lot with us. To be honest, I kind of thought you were there, but maybe you weren't. But whoever was walking the lot when we were going and identifying which trees to save and which ones not, I think everyone on that walk knew Sotir. Now, you know, yeah, obviously, that fact got lost. And I don't, I'm not saying anyone did anything
Deliberately.
deliberately. But, you know, a bunch of people knew at the beginning. And, you know, I don't know landscape enough to know. You know, I see the plant come through, there's going to be trees and and yeah, they're going to do whatever they need to do to be able to plant the trees there. You know, will they got to dig out knotweed or do something else? I don't know. I'm just going to get it done.
It comes down to making a decision with respect to what my commitment was to the town under the plan that was approved. There is nothing on the plan that says I have to remove knotweed. There is on the plan that I have to plant trees. Maybe we can find a medium ground where the cost of planting the trees and buying the trees can be offset by doing some work to clear that knotweed that's out there. But I am not in a position to tell the board what to do, you know? I am relying on you and I'm working on plans that have been approved and decisions that have been made. My suggestion, like I said earlier, is to take a look at the place now and go back and visit what we're dealing with in the winter time when all the trees are bare and make a decision at that time. Maybe we don't plant 15 trees. Maybe we'll plant seven or eight trees and use the rest of the money to do the clearing of the knotweed to allow at least for those seven to survive. I don't have the answers, but it's just suggestions that I'm making to the board for you guys to consider, you know, as an option. Again, the financial commitment to plant and buy the trees is there. To do anything beyond that, no. And so what I'm asking is if you guys agree that it doesn't make sense to plant trees in a place where the trees may not survive and me to have to be imposed at this stage to clear the knotweed, I don't think it's on the permit. And I don't really think it's enforceable, to be honest with you. But again, this is just my opinion. I don't know. Okay?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McCusker.
Yeah, so I so Tare, I think, the way I think we should approach this is right now, you have a plan, a landscape plan that that that's been approved as part of the permit, et cetera, that says you're supposed to, you know, plant these 15 trees or whatever they are and where you're supposed to plant them. And you've, and there is a problem, right, in completing that plan? In my mind, I think you and your landscape architect should come back with an alternative, right? So so the board is going to expect you to follow through on what's in the comprehensive permit. And I think we all agree that if you do exactly what's in the permit and plant these trees amongst all that knotweed, that's not going to be productive for anyone, right? So it seems to me that that you should come back to us with a plan and say, hey, I can't do what's on the plan, because this is what happens all the time with all the 40Bs, right? You know, what we want to do, we can't do, so this is what I want to do instead. I think I would feel much more comfortable, that's the way we were approaching this. And I'm fine with waiting till winter time to see what is really needed or not. But I would feel much better approaching it that way. You come back to us with, this is what I can do instead of what's on the approved plan.
That's fair. I have no problem with that, but I still like the board to come in and take a look at the place now. And then again, one more time come winter time. I think having your eyes, it's important because when a proposal is made by a landscape architect, at least you know exactly what we're dealing with at that point.
And, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Reed.
And to kind of reiterate what Bill is saying, the onus is, we didn't, we didn't put anything in writing, you have to remove knotweed because we're assuming that Sotir's landscape architect is going to do what we said was needed to be done. And if that included removing invasive species, that should just be part, we aren't experts, they are the experts. So I agree that having having Sotir give us some sort of option, knowing now what maybe they didn't know before, but it still has to be, it still has to follow the comprehensive permit. So that should be coming from his experts, not us, because we're not landscape architects. So I agree with what you're saying.
And that sort of stuff happens all the time.
And you're not changing the intent of what.
Right. The intent's still the same. Yeah.
There's got to be a way to deal with this stuff. I mean, is knotweed going to take over Knott Crafton?
Potentially. Well, I think left on its, I mean, you know, there was a lot of it in that whole lot.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think left completely on its own, it probably would, but you know, I think there is a way to deal with it. I think that's what Sotir is saying is that it's going to be really expensive. You know, there's a lot of excavation probably that needs to happen to literally dig it out. And then you still have it right on the other side of the fence, and it's not, it's not going to say, I'm not going to go past the fence. So it's it's coming back.
Yeah.
Even if it's a lot, it's coming back.
Not to mention that when you're using machines to clear the net wood, you could be damaging those existing trees that we worked so hard to preserve. I don't know what the impact would be, but there got to be a way for us to figure out something that makes some sense. You know, I don't, I don't, I don't think the board is unreasonable with wanting to see some trees there. But where they get planted and how we go about doing it, yeah, I can ask the landscape architect, but the extent of the cost is what I'm more concerned with. And the knotweed was not something that was present at the time the plan was created. Neither our landscape architect or your landscape architect came up and said, hey, you got to take care of this part. You know, you got to do the next plan. Again, we're being repetitive. I did hear what the board is looking to see done. I did ask to see if I can have the board come up there, take a look at it now and sometime in the winter time. And then we can have the architect, like you suggested, Bill, to give us a suggestion to what we can or should do, you know?
Maybe there's a different species that's hardier or something.
Or so what I was trying to explain was if if I was a resident on Matthew Circle, knowing that this development was coming, I would have I would have wanted any type of barrier possible, every type of barrier possible. But now that it's actually built, and I'm thinking like the not the middle of those three houses, the one on the right. You know, now that this is built, it looks like there's a lot more trees in between that and the development than, you know, I I would have anticipated. So maybe that this landscape money is spent better elsewhere. You know, even if it's focused more on the house in the middle. I don't know. But just along those lines, I don't think we should be forcing to stick to a plan that may be solving a problem that doesn't exist now that it's built. But there's still, you know, something needs to be pressed there.
I think that's kind of what Sotir is saying, though. Let's go to go back in the winter. And I commit to going, you know, I've been out there a few times now. I know what it looks like now. You know, we all should, if we have, and go out there and look at it, you know, tomorrow. And get a idea. But I'll go back once the leaves are off the trees. I'll commit to that, no problem. And I think that's kind of what Sotir is saying is let's see what it really looks like. And, you know, and I get it. I mean, tree trunks provide some, you know, some screening. They really do. So even if it's just a trunk of, you know, a tree, that does provide some screening. And maybe it's basically okay the way it is. I, you know, so yeah, let's let's look at it. I'm fine with that.
Mr. Yaman.
I'm going to make a final comment then.
We're kicking you out.
You should just stop saying that. You wouldn't be.
Members who when we reviewed these plans, a an elbow fight occurred when we were discussing landscaping and peer review of landscaping first. And that didn't occur, as my recollection takes me. The second point is, Sotir, by eliminating those Don redwoods, which show on this plan, there were originally going to be three. And per our town engineer, saying that they should not be planted in a in a spill basin for detention bone, I suspect that the cost of those trees will probably offset a great portion of digging out the knotweed and bringing in some loam to plant trees to give them a better chance of success to give the people on Matthew Circle what they wanted was a little screen in the winter. And I recall having the conversation and walking over on Matthew Circles, Matthew Circle and getting permission to walk in the backyards because I thought maybe we could plant trees on their side of the property, on their property, which would give them the screening that they were very vocal about. And so with that, I say good night to Sotir and good night to you all. And it's been a pleasure serving with you. And I'm on my way to the Town House Tavern for a drink.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
And, you know, Bill did just remind us of a very important point, and that's that we did not do peer review. I remember that now. We did not do peer review of the landscape.
There is a peer review of the landscape plan, Bill. I have copies of responses back and forth from the ZBA's landscape architect and our architect. There was a peer review and there have been letters exchanged. So that's not an accurate comment either.
Boy, I remember, wow.
I can give you copies of the exchanges that have been made between the landscape architects. I have copies of all those letters.
I believe you, Sotir. But I also remember, let's put it this way. If there was a peer review, you weren't happy about it.
Anytime I have to pay extra money for life, I'm not happy for it.
I mean, I can look through all the old documents and see, I'm sure I have it.
Yes, I don't see it on the website.
Well, because. Yeah.
Why don't we agree to do what we discussed earlier? Take a look at the place now, we'll go back in January, and then we can decide what will work best for everyone and we'll take it from there.
I think that makes sense.
Alright, so just, we just, if you all go out together, I need to post it as a meeting?
I don't, there's no reason for us to all go out together.
No, just everybody go when you can.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we all know what we're looking at. You know, it's straight ahead as you drive in, the fence is there.
So it's not on the right, it's straight back. Okay.
It might make sense to go also from Matthew Circle and take a look from that area. You'd be able to see it from there, too.
Yep.
So better view to what actually you can see on the abutting property.
Yep. Agreed.
Maybe we should send a couple of members to Japan for the source of this. To see how the Japanese live with this stuff. Is that part of the 40B process?
I'll go.
Bill would not have resigned if that was there.
Alright, thank you, Sotir.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Hope you feel better, Sotir.
Yeah, I hope you feel better.
Thank you, thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Sotir.
You too. Bye.
Alright. So next item, High Point Estates. So I'll turn this over to Mr. McCusker.
High Point, okay. So here's the deal with High Point. As a reminder to everyone, the High Point came to us to close out that development. Right? And I don't know what the exact right term is, but I think you know what I'm saying.
Determination of completeness.
Determination of completeness, right. And we initially said, no, we would not do that, find that completeness or whatever, primarily because of the issues with drainage around Lot 76. We ended up going to, we ended up, the developer appealed that to the Housing Appeals Committee. We went to arbitration. The settlement coming out of arbitration was that the developer would do a few different things, one of which was some drainage improvements around Lot 76. So the developer's engineer, Pat Garner, worked with our peer review, Sean Reardon, came up with a plan for drainage improvements around Lot 76. And also, there's a few other things, cleaning up the lots that are out there and a few other things. The developer and in the this board, in its wisdom, authorized me to approve, I guess, this work upon completion. And the intention was that I would approve it based on Sean Reardon, our peer review approving it. Well, it wasn't that simple because uh, the developer now considers himself to be done with the improvements. Um, and while everything looks really good, there is one small area where the slope is steeper than what was on the plan uh, of improvements. And Sean Reardon has posted, has, has pointed this out in his most recent letter, which I don't know if we have that on our packets or not.
I, I've attached everything, all going back and forth, so it should be in it.
Yeah, so it's, it's in the one, um.
It's the last.
You scroll down and it's.
Page five.
Okay. Um, but basically Sean points out this one small area and it's, I mean, I've gone out, looked at it. I knew, I knew when he even said it before we were even going out to double check it, exactly what he was talking about. Um, and actually Mr. Adams was with me just the other day. We were out there together and looked at it as well. It's one small area that's steeper than what's on the plan. And Sean has basically suggested that, you know, maybe we just keep, I can't remember, what did he say, five to 15 or something like that?
I thought it was 20. And agreed to 10, I think.
But the bottom, bottom line is that the, the applicant is, the developer has, yeah. To address the issue of steep slopes, that's on page four. Uh, I recommend that town consider one of the following. Town keeps 15 to 20,000 of the bond in place for at least five years to ensure slopes remain stable and repair neighbors, or the town take responsibility for maintaining the slopes in exchange for a monetary consideration paid by the developer, recommended range eight to $12,000. And the applicant has basically offered um, to give us $10,000 and, and call it done. So I, I, you know, um, and then I checked, so, so this land will eventually become the town's. So I did check with um, Evan Bressard, our town administrator. And I think he's fine with, um, he would be fine with even less than that. And he said, 5K would cover the cost of us needing to rent a machine larger, you know, if it came to that. Um, so I think he's fine with us taking 10 grand for the town. Um, so that's where we're at. I mean, you know, is, is this board okay? This board had previously had said to me that I could, you know, okay this based on Sean's okay. I just wanted, that's not something we had contemplated. So are we okay with essentially saying, um, accepting the work as is along with a 10K additional payment?
Bill, is it 10 or is it five? Cause page three reads, my client is proposing to make five.
Then he came back and said 10.
Yeah.
Somewhere else he said 10.
So where does the 10 go?
I think it would go to the town.
I think it was.
General fund?
Yeah.
Probably.
So if we ever had to do something in there, we're gonna go beg them for money.
Beg who?
Selectmen.
We wouldn't. We, this board wouldn't have to do it.
The town. We'd be out of it by then.
Yeah, that'd be the town.
Alright, you're right.
If there's an issue, they would go through the selectmen or DPW.
You're right. We, we would be, the road would be accepted. We wouldn't have anything to do with it at all.
Right.
Finally.
Right.
Right. Yep. I'm sure they'll blame us anyways, but they'll forget the 10K, blame us.
Of course, of course.
Can, can I ask a question?
Yep.
So when it originally had suggested 15 to 20, that was for the developer to be responsible? What was that original proposal?
Well, I mean, what Sean is saying is keep 15 to 20K of the bond.
In place for at least five years.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think Mr. Hingeroni wants to do that. I think he wants his money.
Right. So if we take responsibility, why are we accepting less money if we're willing to take responsibility to the town? You'd think we would want the higher amount just to cover.
I, I, yeah, I, I think the 15 to 20, because it's a bond and the developer was gonna get it back eventually, I think you can ask for a higher number.
Gotcha, and then we keep it. Okay, gotcha. Yeah, that makes sense.
We're keeping the other one.
Okay, that makes sense.
I walked it. I didn't think it looked that serious.
Yeah, I don't.
I mean, it's, it's there and the engineer is saying, possible, maybe, could happen, but.
So if he's willing to give us 10, then.
Right.
Sounds pretty fair.
What, what's the location on the?
Um, okay. So it's, it's way up here. It's way up in this, this area right here. Are you, do you have this online somewhere?
Uh, I do. I'm trying to pull up near map so you can see.
But if everyone just huddles around, I'll just tell you, it's right up in this area here.
It's right around 73, where that is.
I guess it is close to 73, yeah.
Is that where they did that drainage to that culvert? Is it by that?
I'm not sure what culvert.
Culvert that we did.
So, so we built, so this, this, this is kind of a swale that was done all the way along the back of Lot 76.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And it just kinda terminates in, in some rocks and things to absorb the water.
And her pool's been okay since then?
I, I, you know, I, I don't know the, I, I don't, I don't know.
So here's what it looks like while it was being done in April.
So it's to the far right.
Far right, over here?
Yeah.
Right. Okay. Alright.
The far right that, that um.
Right here. Wow, look at all that stuff. Wow.
Ideally, you know, so what, what they've done, and you can see uh, at the top of the picture, and actually it's going away now, at the top of the picture, here at the bottom of the picture. She, they basically, if you pull the picture down, we, we basically wrapped her property in swales, right? So keep pulling it down.
Oh, I see, yeah, cause there's one right here too.
Right, so there's that one that goes out to the street and then keep going down. You don't know if you'll be able to see it, but then along the driveway as well.
Oh, right here.
Doesn't look as green, but you know, actually his machine is in there cleaning up the land. But they're kinda building another one there as well. So we, we did, we, I mean, the developer did what they could to basically try to, you know, surround her property with swales and stuff to keep water off her property. Ideally, that line of arboretis that you see to the left, there would be a swale right along there as well, but that's private property. So the developer was in the building.
Yeah, some, well homeowner planted those. Yeah.
Yeah, two homeowners. Um, so, you know, um, ideally there would be another swale there. And at some point, if, if, if the homeowner wants to, you know, do that, it might be in their best interest to do it. Uh, I, I think as part of the settlement talks, we tried to do that, but you know, there was no interest in us going on their property. Us, the developer going on their property. So. That's a good picture where, that, see, cause you can see that, um.
Yeah, so we have this program called near map.
Okay.
And every so many months, it's basically drones that fly over and then they update it. So.
This is a drone that does this?
Yeah.
All over town?
All over the country it does it, depending what part of the country you're in.
Ohio.
It's called what? Near map. Near map.
I mean, how, are they way up?
I have no idea. I don't know if it's a satellite or a drone, but they get, I mean, as you can see, I, so if I do the oblique on it, so I can get an angled view. I bet it's a satellite.
It's scary.
I bet it's a satellite. It's probably. And then I can twist it and you can get a different angle on it.
And you get it through the town's account?
Yeah.
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 It's not a public.
A near map. Mm-hmm. So now, like I twisted it and you can see the different swales.
Can anybody get this?
I don't know. The town has an account and we had to sign in and we had to get a link to be able to access it. So.
I doubt it. Something like that is gonna be just free.
Watch how you walk in your backyard in the daylight, I guess, huh?
Yeah, be careful.
And so long as we're talking, I, I.
Wear your clothes.
So, so whoa, pull, pull it back out, please.
Yeah.
Alright, so long as we're talking, um, one of the lots that's leftover, has not, has not been developed, right there where the arrow is now, that's one of them. Um, that's the second one. That lot, go back to that, now that second one?
This one?
Stop moving.
It's what?
That lot, um, was discussed for the town keeping it, alright? So, so the first lot is gonna be turned over, we, hopefully is gonna be turned over to the Affordable Housing Trust. They're trying to decide if they want it or not. The lot where the arrow is now was going to be turned over to the town. And I think that's cause there was this perception that it was not a very buildable lot. But since they have cleaned it up, it appears to be very buildable.
And then there's.
So I have proposed to the Affordable Housing Trust that they take that lot as well. Now where the arrow is there, that's the third lot. That's very steep and would be rather expensive to build. You know, that, that one is supposed to be handed over to the Affordable Housing Trust as well. Um, and I have encouraged the Affordable Housing Trust, and this is within our last couple of meetings, um, to take all three lots. I'd like to see them take all three lots. And um, if, if only cause it just gives them flexibility to, to try and get a developer in to ideally get two affordables built, but maybe they get one affordable built and one market rate built. Um, I, I don't know.
You know, that third one, there's two houses on either, a house on either side of that steep one.
So it can be done.
It can be done. I mean, even if they took it and sold it to help fund the other thing.
Well, that's what actually, you know, Colleen Roy, I heard her talking to somebody, it's like, you know, we, we put affordables on the easy to build lots and then leave this one to be, for it to be market rate, where, you know, a developer can make more money and, and pay for the, the site development that's gotta go on there.
I mean, there's a lot, if you guys drive up Cortland Way, there's a lot that's like this.
Oh, yeah.
Three different people have tried to build on it. There's a guy doing it now. I mean, this has been going on for eight years. Cause they have to engineer, they have to do engineered pancake walls because it's such a steep slope to support the house. Someone's doing it. I mean, it just took eight years and somebody who's got the money who's finally gonna put the engineering in it, so.
And this is not as steep as that one.
No, this is not as steep as that one. I mean, that one over on Cortland.
So the Affordable Housing, the Affordable Housing Trust actually was out there Tuesday night, walking these lots. I joined them, helped point out, you know, what, what lot was what and that sort of thing. Um, and there, I imagine at their next meeting, they'll make a decision of whether they're gonna take it or not. This is all part of the Housing Appeals Committee settlement. Um, I suppose if they say they don't want the lots, then you know, the, either we, and I guess we'll have to consult with Dan and, and the town, but either they just hand them over to the town of Grafton or maybe they do nothing. And uh, Mr. Hingeroni continues to own them. And my guess is he stops paying taxes and eventually the, the town takes him in a, in a, in a tax foreclosure. But regardless, um, so that's just a little bit of another, other update. But I think right now, the, the main thing I think we need right now is maybe just a, a vote of the board that, that we are okay with accepting a $10,000 payment in lieu of, um, in, in lieu of the, the uh, slopes as discussed in Sean's letter. Something like that.
And if we agree to that, does he get his bond?
Eventually, yeah, eventually he'll get his bond back.
Bond back. Yeah, he doesn't get the bond till the determination of completeness is done and it's voted in a town meeting. Gotcha, right, yeah, okay. Which is what, Elmark is gonna be the next one for that. Right, okay.
And the trees in the middle, that's, that's with the town?
Well, that's the open space in the middle of it, yeah.
Yeah, that is, that's open space.
Is that the exposure for the $5,000? I mean, what's the exposure with this money that we're keeping?
So.
Oh, that, that's a good question.
So zoom back in on that corner that, that I said was, was the problematic. So it's, it's probably about a 20-foot section of the, of the um, swale that was built all the way to the far right. Right? Move the arrow up, off the green. The green is, is actually up high. It's hard to see. But that dark line is, is where the swale was built. Go to the right, to the right, to the right, to the right, to the right. It's right in that area there. The slope is a little bit too steep. So in theory, if the slope were to collapse, then we probably have to get in there with a machine, which we can by way of the open space. Matter of fact, that's what the developer did. And regrade that and fix that slope so that it functioned properly.
How did he get in there?
Right through, came, I think he actually, up through the back of the open space and came down.
You mean from way up top?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh.
There's a, there's an access point.
Right there.
Right here is there's an easement to get in.
Okay.
Back in here.
Okay, so they just sort of come reslope it?
They'd have to go in and fix it.
Yeah.
And that's what Paul Canoyer said in his comment, that it would cost them five grand to rent a machine and.
It, it was Evan who said it, but yeah.
Oh, Evan.
Yeah. So yeah, that, that's what you'd, we'd have to do. Yep.
Alright, so.
So, um, so I, perhaps just a motion, I suppose I can make the motion. You know, that, that we, um, you know, that we accept um, a $10,000 payment from the developer in lieu of correcting the steep slopes outlined in Sean Reardon's letter of June 25th, 2024.
Plus, should we have that?
Letter of what's?
June 25th, 2024.
That we're approving the work that was done?
Sean essentially approved it, except for the steep slopes.
Right, but do, do we need that in the motion? That's my only question.
I mean, I suppose we could, in, in theory.
We, the board delegated it to Bill and.
I mean, from Peter's perspective, he, he, he's seeing us, I mean, I don't know if he's watching, but he's seeing us vote to take money, but not to approve anything.
Um, because, because we, we had already delegated that to me to approve it, but we could. It probably isn't a bad idea for the board to just accept it.
If you don't think we need it, don't do it.
I, I don't know.
Yeah, I would say we might as well. Based on your recommendation.
I mean, if, if I were.
The work has done.
I think if I were him, I'd feel better if.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah. So Katrina, can you read back? Do you think you have the motion I made?
To accept $10,000 in payment in lieu of the steep slope in the swell as noted in Sean Reardon's letter dated 6/25/24.
In lieu of correcting the steep slope. Um, so then really what we wanna do is, um, so then the, the, at the beginning of the motion, move to accept um, the drainage improvements. Drainage improvements constructed in accordance with the as-built plan dated June 10th, 2024. And accept $10,000 in lieu of steep slopes. So accept the drainage improvements as described in the as-built plan dated June 10th, 2024 by Patrick Garner probably putting in there. And accept $10,000, blah, 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 blah. I think that's a better motion.
It is. Perfect.
Yeah, I think that's a better motion. Thank you. Good idea.
Is there a second of that motion?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
And Mr. Mikey, uh, I'll point you to, uh, or actually, do we?
Yeah. Me, me, yeah, you should, we should employ somebody cause we're only four members right now.
Mr. Mikey?
Yes.
And Chairman Bostias?
Alright. So I, I think it, I'll continue to work with Dan offline, but I, I think we're at the point where we just need to decide if the, who's gonna accept the lots coming out of this settlement and then, um, you know, let Dan finalize that sort of stuff. I don't, I don't know that they're gonna make it on the fall town meeting, but um.
One, one last comment, um, if I could. When you come in the project, right on the left is a dilapidated, falling down building.
Mm-hmm.
I know I've mentioned it before when Peter was either on uh, Zoom or, or here, um. I just can't see, I can't get in front of town meeting and say everything's complete, cause I, I would feel responsible to tell town meeting, we're taking a dilapidated, fallen down building, cause it's in the open space. If it wasn't in the open space, I wouldn't be talking right now, but so somehow we have to advise him again to, it's in his best interest, he, to take it down.
Yeah, so, um.
Get rid of it.
I will, I will bring that up and feel free to remind me if it seems like I may have forgotten somehow, but I, I will bring that up to, to Dan Hill, um, to, to bring to the developer as part of this.
I mean, I, I would, I'm.
I, I agree with you.
After 24 years, this has been a long development.
Yeah, no, I, 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 I agree completely with what you're saying, um, and I, I will bring that up.
It's the brown, right?
You, you can barely see it now, cause it's, you can just see the roof.
Cause it's gone down, right?
It's such a nice.
When you, when you drive in the entrance, right on the left.
You know kids are hanging out in there. Oh, I'm sure.
I don't know there anymore.
Yeah, I don't know, cause the roof.
There's not much left.
I mean, even if, if we didn't say anything, if the town, somebody at the town meeting brought it up and it got voted down to accept. to accept the road, I don't know what happens.
I would think it's unsafe too.
What's that?
Like if some kids went in there.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's, that's why my concern is that town doesn't want to take something like that, that somebody could get hurt.
Yeah.
Fall down on them.
All right, so the next item on the agenda
Elmark.
Is Elmark Estates and the final release of remaining bond and any peer review account.
So, um, we have the final revised milars, which has the vote from town meeting to accept the roads. So you guys need to sign those tonight. Then it'll go to the select board for their final signature, then to Candy for her final signature, then they'll go to the registry. Um, we're still holding $29,000 in a bond and there's $10,441.61 cents in the peer review account.
Okay.
So as far as I know, Dan's reviewed everything. They've gone back and forth between their attorney and Dan, and Dan and the town attorney. The milars and all the wording for, um, the easements and everything has been clarified, has been approved, so.
Have those deeds been recorded with easements?
As far as I know, yes, because we had the one easement with the one fence and that was moved and that was cleared up. And everything else has been fine.
All right.
Can I pass on this?
Yeah.
Kind of have to, don't you?
I don't have to because it's been, the time, it's been so long and I have no finance, but just, just for appearance.
So that's where that stands.
It was my development.
Was it actually?
Yes, that's when he resigned from the board.
I, I just did the, the, uh, I had to get off the board. Then I sold the development, sold the, I didn't build it.
So, and I, this just came in a couple, like two days ago.
Yeah, it just came in.
I, I would, I would just like Dan's okey dokey before we release the last of the money.
Okay.
Yeah, because how do we know?
No, you know, I'm sorry Chad, I'm sure he wants to get his money back, but, um, I, I, I think it'd be appropriate just to have Dan sign off and say, yes, you, you should do this.
Okay. And then, and.
So I think we can do it next meeting, but.
Yep, we can, or, yeah, but, and you guys can just sign the milars.
We can do that today. I don't see a reason not to do that.
Yeah.
But as far as actually, you know, releasing, I would just, I feel more comfortable if Dan said, okay.
Yeah.
Not a problem.
Who else was on Prentice Place that's here right now? You weren't.
I wasn't, I was, I was out in the audience.
On Prentice or Elmark?
You were on Prentice.
Yeah. Yeah.
Brian, were you on Prentice?
Bill Yeomans.
At the, I think I was midway through Prentice. Or I can't, I joined midway through.
I don't think that.
Carl.
Carl.
Because Carl ordered, and Mary Ann.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think that we did a peer review on the landscape.
Think so?
I think he was saying, no way. And I think we deferred to Bill. We basically, you know, and I think I actually said something like, Bill's pretty knowledgeable.
I think that's what he did.
You should find the bills.
Yeah, we, oh, you, you know.
Oh, yeah, I have every bill.
There would be bills.
Yeah, I'll look.
Yeah.
I'll look at the bills. I, but I'm, I, but I think you're correct. I think we deferred to Yeomans because he knew so much that we ended up not getting a, a pan, uh, peer review for that.
Sorry, my, my ADD kicked in a little bit.
Oh, yes, welcome to my world.
So the next.
ADHD.
Oh, and I also have the decision for you guys to sign for 25 East Street. I finally got the last, Tony and I have been going back and forth and we finally got that done today.
Do we need to, like, accept that decision? Did he say anything like that?
I don't, because everything was voted on, you voted on every single one of the decisions and, and the count is in there because I got all that from Amber. So you guys just need to just, just sign it. Oh, was the decision again?
We might have to, uh, meet.
Yeah, I think, because it says a lot of things.
Does anyone dispute it?
I looked at it. It says a lot of things. Yeah.
Here's the two copies if you guys want. Pass and take a look. Those are the finals to be signed.
So nobody else has seen or read this, huh?
No.
No, I know it was Brian now, I know it was sent to you and Bill, the emails going back and forth.
Um.
Maybe it was sent to me. I, I was kind of out of.
I know, you were saying stuff.
This is the one where I, I did the one dissenting vote on one thing, but yeah, the rest of it we approved.
Everything, but.
Yeah, we did it, we did.
I, I think we need to accept it as drafted or not.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we need to continue, um, Logan Path.
Logan Path, and we have another new case that just came in. 72 Crosby Road, a variance. To put.
Who's 72 Crosby?
Plant, Mike Plant. Um, putting in a garage and there's only one, pretty much one spot he can put it. And there might be another one coming in. There's, I've had a couple of calls, but nothing definite yet.
Um, in all of the communication with, um, Tony was, he, he did say when we had to do.
This has to be filed by next Thursday, the 29th. If you guys sign it all tonight, I can, I'll come in tomorrow and file it with the town clerk. I was.
East Street?
East Street. Yeah. You have 100 days from the time it's.
I, I think we should accept it. I think we should vote to accept that. I just don't know of, of, any, who's going to be comfortable voting. I, I would vote to accept it.
I feel like, didn't we make a decision that night?
We made the decision, but, you know, we, 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 we voted on each point in the decision, all right, and that's it, but if you read that decision that he wrote, where, where's the other one? Do you have it? Um, I mean, there's a lot here.
Yeah, there is a lot there.
You know, and, um, you know, it starts off with, you know, some findings of fact. Um, you know, pending civil prior proceeding, um.
But it's only signing, can we take some time and read it and then come in and sign it?
But they want to vote on it tonight. We, we've got to get it signed by next Thursday, which means it's got to get, be signed and filed with the town clerk by next Thursday. So you'd have to still vote to accept it tonight because we're not going to have another meeting.
What's the question that you have? Because, because we went through each point when.
Because we didn't write the decision, or the town attorney wrote the decision.
Oh, oh, oh.
That's why.
Okay, gotcha.
We don't write any of the decisions.
No, I type them up. I mean, you give me your findings and I type them up and Brian or Bill take a look at them, so.
And don't they have to come from our notes and from what we voted on, so.
And it's, I looked at it, it's pretty much verbatim from what Amber wrote in the minutes, so.
Right. There was a lot of.
There.
There was.
There's a lot of text and findings in here that.
Who else want to look at this? So who, who, of, of the people sitting here tonight, who was, do you have a record who was actually out here both nights? Is it not those right here for East Street? What's it say?
26th of the 20th.
It says you, Kay, myself, um, Bill and Jeffy.
So Brian, Brian and Peter were gone on the 26th and Peter was gone on the 25th, so Peter cannot vote on it.
Right, so we have four of the five who were here.
Right.
Okay.
Brian was here for the first night of it, but not the second night of it.
Okay. But unless he's done a mulligan, he's, he can't vote either. Mullins or whatever it's called.
Mullin, right.
Yeah, which I.
And since Bill Yeomans was here for both and he's no longer a board member, does that affect the count?
Me, well, it means we're down to four.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the, again, the, the salient points have already been voted on and agreed upon. It's just a decision.
It's just voting on the.
I think it would be the four of us.
Right.
Would vote to accept the decision as, as written or not. You know, maybe we just take the time right now to read it and, uh, you want to, if we want to recess maybe and just take the time to read it for those that want to?
Yeah, that makes sense, so we can finalize it tonight.
I don't know, what do you think?
Yeah, I, I think that makes sense, um.
Can you bring out a couple, yeah, put out a couple more copies, Katrina?
Yeah.
Do you want to tell Bill to put us in recess?
Bill, can you put us in recess? Okay. Okay.
So the decision has been reviewed. Is there a motion to accept the decision on?
Yeah. I'll do it, does, you have a copy of that? I move, I move that the board accept the decision as drafted for case number ZB nine zero three.
So moved.
Motion made in second, and this will be a roll call vote of the voting ZBA members, uh, listed in the decision. Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahia?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Passed and the decision is accepted.
So then we just need to sign it.
Yeah, so pass that down for the.
It should be the same four members.
Yep.
Does it have to be in?
Doesn't matter.
Matter of color?
No, doesn't matter.
We'll review the minutes, uh, starting with May sixteen.
You're just these two? Right, those two.
Yes, just those two.
Alright, I'm sorry, Brian, what, what date do we start with?
May sixteen. I reviewed it, this all made sense.
Yeah, it looks good to me.
Have a motion. Is there a motion to accept the meeting minutes of, uh, May sixteen, twenty twenty-four meeting?
Second. No, someone needs to motion it, he asked for a motion.
Oh, so moved.
And then I need a second?
I'm, I'm intentionally not saying it, cause I wasn't here, so I just rather rather.
Alright, motion made seconded, uh, Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
I was absent, can I vote on that?
Accepting the minutes. Point Mr. Mahia to vote on the minutes.
Yes.
Alright, and the chairman votes yes, so the May sixteenth minutes are accepted. Next is the June twenty-sixth minutes.
June twenty-sixth, July twenty.
Word says members present here. Should it break off after Alex?
And Robert Burger.
Yeah, it should.
Oh, yeah, okay, yep.
In the nine oh, case nine oh three, the last bullet under questions from the board. It says the garage can only.
I'll have to look back on the, um, video. I think it was the garage can only be for personal use, is what it was, what was. Cause that was case question, can it only be used for personal or can it be used? But I'll double check the minutes.
Alright, maybe somebody just said this, but at the end of questions for the board, the garage can only something?
Yeah, she's gotta go back and look.
I just gotta go back and look, cause there were a lot of questions and stuff back and forth.
What's the plus sign after oil sucks a present?
After what?
Uh, la- second to last bullet on the first page, oil sucks a present and there's a plus sign.
Oh, that's just typo.
There was another one of those.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's, uh, further up, um, under Henry Lanes, the second to last bullet on Henry Lanes.
Okay.
Does this need to be in there?
What's that? He said it.
Really? Wasn't sure.
Yeah, I mean, he, he, he said it. It probably should accuse Mr. Burger.
But he, he said it more than once, so I.
That should say accuses Mr. Burger, instead of.
Oh, okay, yep. Oh, yeah, we had two that night, it was a fun night.
Yeah, it was a crazy night.
It was crazy.
I forgot about that.
The Zoom kept looking in and out, it was a fun night.
All around, it was a fun night.
Uh, yeah.
You know, on Bedford Drive, I suppose now that the state law has changed, they don't even necessarily need that special permit from the planning board.
Nope, they don't.
But it's there.
It is there now.
Uh, Logan Path. I don't know if everyone's ready, but I'll say, uh, I move that we accept the meeting minutes of Wednesday, June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four as amended.
I can't decide which is which.
It's okay.
I really can't, I don't know, when you say one, it sounds the same as the last time.
Well, cause if Brian says that he's asking for motion, if Bill's saying it, he's motioning it.
Unless, unless it's a forty B case, in which case.
Gotcha, okay, I, okay.
If it's in the first quarter of the moon.
Okay, so coming from, gotcha.
That's never been explained to me.
Ms. Reed, how do you vote?
Y- yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Mahia?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. June twenty-sixth are accepted as. July twenty-fifth.
So you have the same thing with Bob Burger and members present?
Yep, yep.
George, I presented a letter from Bob Berger that the court ordered lift to be removed, not the town. Actually, I, I don't understand what that's saying, but come to think of it, I didn't understand what Mr. Howard was saying either, so probably makes sense. What's CONCOM?
Conservation Commission.
Fletcher Tilton.
He was from Fletcher Tilton? I move we accept the meeting minutes of July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four as amended.
Second.
Oh, you're supposed to say something. Ms. Reed, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
It's only been ten years.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. Minutes are accepted for July.
Okay, so now we gotta pick a date to continue Logan Path and the new case.
Is that it, only those two?
Only those two at the moment, yes. At the moment.
Are you heaving that or taking it with you?
No, why you want?
Yeah, I'll read it, I'm curious. Wish I hadn't missed that one.
So the extreme earliest we could do it would be the nineteenth of September. And I will not be here.
Just like Chris, why?
Because I'd have to get the legal notice to the Grafton News by tomorrow in order, um, for it to be published on the twenty-ninth. So it'd be published on the twenty-ninth and the fifth for, to get it in for the twelfth. And then fortunately, I have a wedding out of town I'm leaving for tomorrow.
I would say the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth?
Okay.
Twenty's what?
Twenty-sixth, September twenty-sixth.
I'm not here, but.
What do you want?
Well, the only thing about the third is the applicant for Crosby Road is not here that week, he's on vacation, so that would push us to the tenth.
Is that cutting it close?
It's my birthday.
Oh, yeah.
Then they, when you just got sworn in, they didn't tell you about birthdays?
Okay, so Bill's not here on the tenth, so.
No, 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 I'm not here on the third.
You're not here on the third, yeah, the applicant's not here on the third.
So we can't do the twenty-sixth?
Peter's not here, so I mean, that's your call, if, if the other five of you are available, then we're good.
Or you could do it the week before and I'm not here if the other.
I can't do it the nineteenth.
Okay.
I mean.
You suggested the nineteen.
I could do the nineteenth, yes, I could do the nineteenth.
I'd rather not do it.
Actually, nineteenth is tough for me too. September's a bad month.
So either the twenty-sixth or October tenth.
Tenth is great.
Is the tenth too late?
No, cause that came in, that's what I was just starting to look at, I stamped, I think I stamped this in yesterday.
Whatever works for it.
Well, if you're likely to not be here on the tenth, then that's fine.
Yeah, cause there's five of us.
Then we might as just go, well, we still may, the tenth will give us an opportunity to get more cases.
Yeah, the sixty-fifth day is October twenty-fifth. So we have time, so you just.
Tenth works for me.
Yeah, let's do the tenth.
Yeah, let's do the tenth.
Alex will think about you out celebrating.
Probably won't be so, I'll, I'll be here if I'm not celebrating. Thirty-one's a, not a special year.
God, you're young.
I saw a good band that was.
Okay, so I need a motion.
Remember Creed?
Wow.
I hate to tell you.
So tenth is, when we're doing it?
Yeah, so I need a motion to continue case nine oh six to the tenth.
I move we continue case number nine oh six to October tenth at seven P M.
Seconded, Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so I need a motion and a second to adjourn. I move that we adjourn.
Hang on a second, hang on a second, we've heard testimony on Logan Path, we just did the, who was here for that?
I mean, maybe too late, but I, I, it is. We just went through these minutes.
Yeah, I was not here then.
I was here.
So Logan Path was heard the night of the storm.
June twenty-sixth.
So Peter and Brian were not here. But if Brian wants, he could watch the, the meeting if he wanted to. There's a, there's a good chance, in all honesty, there's a good chance he's gonna withdraw and have to resubmit anyway.
Oh, really?
Yes, dealing with CONCOM, there's, there's a, there's a very good chance he may have to withdraw what he has submitted. And resubmit a different set of plans where he's not tearing up the foundation and, and going off what's already there, so.
Yeah, so, so it looks like we, we actually have to hear this case, then maybe you let, um, Brian, Peter know and they can do a mullins.
Right, yep.
And be able to.
Absolutely. Perfect, okay, still need a motion to adjourn, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Seconded, Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Mahia?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes.